Yeah, I think it.
Good evening, everybody, and I'm calling our council meeting to order. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Didrick.
Here.
Councilmember Pointer.
Here.
Councilmember Scherbering.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Okay, is there any changes to the agenda for tonight or any corrections or additions?
We had a couple of councilors talk to me about possibly pulling something out of the consent agenda. Is this the time that you'd like them to ask to pull something from the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Regular discussion.
That's the one that I was talking to you about?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's fine to leave it in there because after we were talking about it, it's not the proper board.
Okay.
Sort of thing.
Okay.
Okay, so it's staying, okay, with that, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda for tonight then?
Not to interrupt your.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Three point seven was the one I was concerned about with striking energy moving towards that twenty-five foot mark.
Okay.
After getting some clarification, it's, it's not the Board of Adjustments. Adjustments, it's, it's the zoning board that I.
PNC, yeah, right, okay, alright, okay.
I move to approve the agenda.
I second it.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion or comments? Linda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Alright, next it's a public input period. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record before proceeding with any of your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period at thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period, which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Is anybody who'd like to speak to the council tonight?
If we have an informal line.
And hearing that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public input period, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Okay, there. First item, I need a motion to approve the minutes from our March twenty-fourth city council meeting, the minutes of the April seventh proposed tax levy special city council meeting, and the minutes of the April seventh special council meeting, and the minutes of all. I need a motion to approve resolution thirty-four approving the bills. Next, I need a motion to acknowledge the receipts from our city reports that the park and recs and Board of Adjustments and the wastewater report. Next item, I need a motion to approve a liquor license for mixed tecca. Then we need a motion to approve a request in the Delaware County Sexual Assault Response Team to the lights on West Marion Street Bridge with the teal lights in April for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I believe she came to talk to us at the meeting as a whole. Next, I need a motion to approve the second city council meeting in May that falls on Memorial Day, and we usually change that to that Tuesday, so if everybody's okay with that, we'll have that on that Tuesday instead, which will be May twenty-seventh at five PM. Then I need a motion to review the decision by Strighton Energy about their five-foot front yard exception. And before we have that, I'll take a motion in a second and then open it up for comments and questions.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and it's open for any questions or comments?
I have been, had a couple of councilors talk to me regarding why the Board of Adjustment decisions were split, the way they are split on the agenda. Stritons was approved with three zero. The Stritons is a five-foot exception and not a variance. The variance has a different threshold requirement of a hardship for it to be approved, but an exception does not have that stricter requirement. Because it was three zero that did pass the Board of Adjustment, I was not able to attend the meeting, was not there. During that meeting, we had another decision on a variance request that looked like it passed with a two to one vote. However, under our ordinance, under state law, it requires a majority of the board, meaning it had to have three affirmatives in order for it to pass. So the other one we are asking the Board of Adjust, or is asking the council to remand it back for further consideration. This one, the council could take two actions and decisions by the Board of Adjustment. They can either acknowledge the decision or they can remand the item back for further consideration. After that, it's been remanded back for the consideration. The Board of Adjustment makes a decision, it's final. The council has then the option of either accepting it or they take the Board of Adjustment to District Court. The Board of Adjustment is a quasi judicial branch, and that is why there is this process that goes through this. So there's a little bit of difference between the Board of Adjustment planning the zoning and the city council, so there's some differences in the groups. One of the questions that was brought up was the front yard setback requirement, thirty foot for industrial, is that needed? Majority of all are the setbacks for twenty-five foot. Question is, how often are we having this exception come up? Is this something we need to review on a regular basis?
And.
So I am going to have staff pull all of the Board of Adjustment items that have come up in the last ten years and look at the decisions of whether they're related to setbacks, or variance or exceptions, or whether they are used permits. Up until a couple of years ago, setbacks was questionable as to whether or not that was a hardship requirement. Supreme Court did make a ruling on that in a case that came out Clear Lake, and they ruled that even the setback requirements required you to prove a hardship in order for you to grant that variance. Now, there is new state legislation going on right now where they are looking at authorizing cities to grant variances based on size restrictions. So you wouldn't have to have that threshold of hardship.
Gotcha.
So we'll have some other discussions, but that is the reason why you have two Board of Adjustment items, one in the consent agenda, one in the regular agenda. If you want to pull one of those or both of those out again, the council could pull anything out of the consent agenda to vote on separately.
I hear you.
That was.
Request, and that's what you were.
Yeah.
Tim says it better than I do. It was just one of those things where it was, why? Why are we doing what we're doing type of thing? If we're gonna be sitting here and reviewing setbacks and maybe finding and zoning needs to relook at the code altogether and see if it just needs to be changed to twenty-five foot instead of the thirty foot, instead of having the, they come to it.
The Board of Adjustment request.
Right. So.
And then keeping up with every change that they make in the legislative part as well, so. Alright, hearing no further discussion, um, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Alright. Next, our first item tonight on the regular agenda, I need a motion. Well, first of all, do you wanna come up and talk to us? Stephanie? You wanna come to talk to us here? We'll do that first. We're gonna be talking about us to do a street closure on August fifteenth for a community street dinner in social events.
Yes, hello, I'm Stephanie Fangman, and I'm representing the Manchester Vitality Endowment. At the summer event, we're hoping, or asking for permission to host a community, a ticketed community street dinner, August fifteenth, requiring the closure of the street from Main Street to East Delaware. We have talked with all the businesses on that street, gave them the date time, and they have given verbal consent to agree, agreeable with the event. We're hoping this can be a fun community event as well as highlight all local things that Manchester has to offer. That's the main point of the event, is to highlight the restaurants and businesses. We're reaching out for separate courses from different businesses within Manchester. We have the support of multiple businesses, and we're encouraging them to also use suppliers within Manchester, so push on the path to fairway, local, local farmers, if they, if and when they can, also looking into decorations and including as many businesses as we can to highlight the great stuff Manchester has. So we're requesting street closure from one PM to twelve AM to allow setup and tear down of the event.
What time will the event actually be going from?
I, verifying specific times with those who are agreeing, but approximately six, six o'clock start time, five o'clock, doing a social hour, and then working with Riverbend to do like an event afterwards with music and kind of extend the, the evening into, into Riverbend.
Any questions for Stephanie? It's kinda like what they did down in the island.
Yeah, we, we got, Ryan did it. Iowa City has a really successful event. Malinda does one, Mount Vernon, he looked into a couple options, so.
Okay, awesome. Alright, thank you. Alright, then before us, I do see a motion to approve the request by the Manchester Vitality Endowment.
I'll make a motion to approve, you know, second.
Any further questions, comments? Hey, Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
There he is.
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, next, F and M Bank is here, gonna be updating us about their celebration block party on June seventh.
Yeah, we're back. Oh, yes. Thanks for having us. I'm Andy Custer with F and M Bank, and as honey mentioned, we're working through planning for our hundred year anniversary in, and we're through the July, but we're doing a block party in June, on June seventh. We currently requested street closure for Main Street through to, to, I believe, before East Delaware. We're finding that we need a little bit more space, but I think we talked about last time possibly needing, so we're hoping to get a little bit further extension, so from the bank down to where Textures is. So we need that street block. They could still go through Textures parking lot. We obviously don't wanna close that down, or they can go down by fairway.
Right.
But we are needing to place the band kind of out in front of Riverbend, kinda in the intersection if possible. Just, we're finding the amount of people that are interested is nearing two thousand currently on social media, so we're getting a little, little worried we won't have enough space.
They draw a crowd.
They draw quite the crowd, which is great, but we just wanna make sure there's enough room for people, our vendors, the band, Riverbend, to have enough for the setup. In addition to needing that extra street, we're also requesting, I believe we had requested a two or three PM start. We are finding that the vendor that Not Quite Brothers needs set, setup requires more time, so they had asked permission for ten AM. So it would be a little bit longer, street closure, which I know might be, might be needed to be talked about, so we just wondered your opinions on that. So if that would be doable, or if we need to bounce back with him.
Where's he gonna be set up?
What's that?
Where is he gonna be set up?
The stage we're planning to set up, right, kinda running east-west right on.
But the vendor has to set up. I mean, where does he have to be set up?
It's a music vendor.
The music, like stage, we have a stage and then.
The music vendor, okay.
The Not Quite Brothers, yeah, so they, Not Quite Brothers, and then they use a vendor to set everything up.
I thought it was their merch, so that's why.
Oh, gotcha, no, and I don't think they'll have merch, I know, they mentioned, yeah, but no, we'll have kind of an awning or a tent where the band is, and then the stage, and I believe there's some side sections to the stage, so it just takes up a little bit more room than, yeah, we were expecting it.
Does that work with River Days?
Yes, it does. We are done, all of our things are done at two o'clock, and we're just down at the White Water Park, so, yeah, we've been working very closely with the things, so.
Yeah, great question, no, yeah.
Ten AM till when?
I believe we had till eleven.
We probably only had till eleven, but, you know, get till midnight, that would be maybe for, because they'll have to take down.
Tear down, yeah.
Yes.
Any concerns, Tim, what I know there?
No concerns of a late time, because the traffic obviously dies off. We may actually just want to close the street off seven o'clock in the morning.
I know, I worked early, parked out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, oh, you could probably block it, and no offense to the alley, but I ended up at AM and leave it.
Just block it, so there's no extra traffic going in there at seven AM, because I'm just thinking, maybe traffic picks up at the downtown.
In the morning, some people tend to park, you know.
And I think we were going to put some signage up the night before to let everybody know that it was closed, so that we could hopefully not have too many cars that we had to have moved.
Yeah, so we're open to whatever you guys think would work best on how to make that work.
Are you guys asking for East Delaware at all? I can't remember.
Um, no.
Just the extra corner of it.
Corner sections.
We wouldn't need to extend around the corner at all, first.
So just basically with the car crews asked for every year, except not Delaware Street.
Yeah, we probably blocked out there the interstate, intersection into the parking lot, just so there's traffic control. We don't wanna have cars, because you can't turn around down there, block off the intersection, so.
Yep.
So does this change need to be in the following motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve shutting down the street from seven AM till midnight on June seventh to allow for the hundredth anniversary.
The good on June sixth.
June.
Oh, yeah.
Says June seventh, right?
So it's a June sixth there.
Oh, the party is, yeah, Saturday evening, but.
Here it's a six, here it's a seven.
Sorry.
That's okay, I'm reading one place, he's reading the other.
Okay.
Okay.
It's June seventh, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve it from seven AM till midnight on the day of Saturday, June seventh, for the hundred year celebration.
Oh, that's Manchester, that's the chambers.
Oh, that's the chamber.
Yeah, that's the chambers.
You're jumping out, I can't believe it.
You'll second that?
Yeah.
Does that include closing it down to textures?
Yeah, down to the car crews section where they cut to go down to.
West Marion Street Bridge.
Yeah.
To the alley.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, you guys later. Alright. Next, we have a request from the Area Chamber of Commerce. We have Laura here to talk to us about River Days as well.
Good evening, thank you for having me, and Laura Holt, Director of the Chamber. So I am requesting to have a beverage tent at our River Days. This will be on Friday evening, June sixth, and we are working with the Rotary Club of Manchester in doing that. It is, it is a chamber event, and we had expressed our desire to have a beverage tent down there. I'm refraining from calling it a beer tent, but we all know what it is. And, and so the Rotary has offered to man it and to work it for us, but it is gonna be at our event. It will be covered by our insurance. They are going to work it, and then they will receive the profits from that, but I am here to ask your permission to allow us to do that down at the White Water Park on June sixth from five. I, we did set an end time, the music is over at eleven. I don't see a reason that the tent should be open until eleven, so I'm gonna say probably ten or ten thirty, but that is what I'm here to make sense.
And they are raising, it's to help the Rotary, they're raising money, they're putting a beautiful clock tower, hopefully, yes.
So, yeah, so this is.
Sounds with approval.
Right.
Yes, so this is for the Rotary to do that, but we are working together with them. And I have submitted my form for, through our insurance, to get that liquor liability done, so I do have that in progress. And then after this, I will, with your approval, then I will apply for that liquor license for that evening, so.
Any further questions for Laura?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm starting. Alright. Any other discussion? Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
There you go, Laura.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
What is the Rotary Club?
That's not my department.
It's a service organization, it's kind of like Lions Club, and J C's and some of the other organizations that do community projects and stuff like that, or better than communities.
I don't wanna get any details wrong, so.
And Laura is still here.
I will stay up here for the next one.
Talking about, uh, June nineteenth.
So this is Ridiculous Days, I'm actually gonna call it Manchester's Ridiculous Sidewalk Sales is what we're gonna call it. But anyway, what we're asking, and I don't have any set details as far as the timing of this. We would like to do a ping pong ball drop again. I know they've done that in years previous, and we would like to bring that back. Now, we do understand that it is June tenth, and so from what I understand, F and M Bank will be closed to that day, and that is usually where we would throw the ping pong balls off of. I have been in touch with Ted Camiller, and he has agreed to use one of his aerial trucks, and he would take the ping pong balls up there and drop them down onto South Franklin Street, so that we could still do the event, even though the bank is gonna be closed. But I am here to ask you if we could have the street closed. What I don't know, have the details on is the timing of that. Because in my mind, there is no sense of having the street closed all day if that's all we're using it for. If I can get some of our outline retailers to come in and set up tents and have maybe their shop up there, then I would want it for the day, and I am thinking no earlier than eight AM and no later than six. But if it is just for the ping pong ball drop and that, it will just be for a couple hours during the day, and that is Thursday, June nineteenth.
I'm kinda with Joe on this one. I, I think there, again, if you're gonna look at eight, you're gonna be filling up the street by eight o'clock. You might wanna close it.
Yeah, a lot of it depends upon the details of the vendors that you're gonna have, if you're gonna be vendors, otherwise, you'll just post no parking by where the police department on the signs of the downtown, on that block, or what we need a half block for the ping pong ball drop.
Right.
So we would not actually pull a barricade, put the left turn signs up and stuff like that, if it's only gonna be for an hour, we would do minimal closure requirements.
Can, I don't even know if this, if, can we move to close it from seven to six, and if they don't need it, it doesn't have to come back to the council for that point?
You can authorize staff to work with Chamber of Commerce on dedicating the time on that date.
Right, that is.
Yes, I just started making a motion.
What he said.
So I have a motion and second?
I think Bill just said.
I think he just seconded it.
Yeah, I think our motion is, Joe's motion is to close it from seven, seven AM to six PM.
Oh, approved by the staff of the authority to close.
If need be.
If need be for Ridiculous Days from the time period necessary.
Working with the Chamber of Commerce. Thanks, Joe, that was perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don't hear any other questions or comments. Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Alright, next, um, we have a review of decision of regarding the Board of Adjustment review that we talked about in this group for the property at one thirty-one East Acres Street, yards that back variance, and how do you want to proceed with this?
And so what, what I am asking, as again, staff, at the time, thought it had passed, it does not pass by our ordinance, we cannot legally allow it to go through. I am asking city council to remand it back to Board of Adjustment for further consideration. We will work with the board. At the time, we only had three members there, we will try to get all five or a majority. But the second remand, if we can only get three, and the vote is kept two to one, it fails, unfortunately, that the ordinance required inside. So we need to have three affirmative in order for it to pass, and if it does not, it takes two years to bring the same item back up. So that's the, I'm asking the council to remand it back so we can have their consideration.
So I have a question, because sometimes I, D C I A will say, I need this many people here for some of our meetings. You could say, I need this many people, and you can't get that many people there to be sure.
The three is the form.
Three's a form, okay.
And so we gotta.
You can only ask for the form.
We're only required for the form. I can't ask them how they're gonna vote on something until they've had a chance for a deal.
But you could, if you don't have a larger group, they could choose to tape to push that to a different date.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I said.
They wouldn't get to pull each other and ask how they're gonna.
No, that's what I mean. I just wanna make sure you have enough people.
Yes, yeah, so three is a form.
Yes.
But we, we will need to.
What if we push it through now? What happens? Like I.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. It, it's not coming to you, and it's coming to you with insufficient vote. Okay, I, that's why I just wanted to clarify that, so.
And all you do is acknowledge, basically, you don't have approval on it.
Right.
So, so there's no action on it tonight.
To remand it, remand it back, okay, that's, okay, okay, I'll second that, alright, we'll do that.
Any other questions or?
I just got one for Tim real quick. On something like that, I know a friend of mine, he put one of them sun setter awnings out.
Yep.
Is that considered where you'd have to have a variant?
Permanent structure, so that would be permitted.
Yeah, 'cause he's got, there wouldn't be a permit for it. Yeah, he has arms in there, they're kinda like awning. They went down, and he just had a thing made, he just popped them in and and hooked it up when he was done, and he didn't have to worry about the snow sitting on it, and.
Yeah, because that's a temporary structure or temporary fixture, it doesn't require building, you know?
That hit, he says it was like a twenty footer, it was, it was nice, so, okay, no, sorry, I'm here.
Great, uh, Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, Larry.
Yeah.
Good luck, Larry. Any questions from you on that part? We don't.
Oh, go ahead, I'll, I'll allow it.
So just straight one pass, then?
Yes.
Yeah, they had enough, they were three zero, right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
And that was an exception.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, I wasn't gonna stop anything straight when I'm doing. I was just asking a question, if we're gonna make it from thirty-five to twenty-five for straight, and why are we not doing twenty-five for just everybody to be done with it, so it can work out, you know? We don't have to.
Yeah, yeah, okay, alright, okay, thank you. Alright, uh, next, we have some people who want to get some chickens. And he's not in high school, by the way, I just found out. He looked like he was in high school. Alright, that's Matt Melinda Marges, is that say that correctly? Um, at one oh eight Unscork, do you wanna go ahead and come up here and speak to us?
Hi, I'm Melinda Marges. I'm just asking for permission to have some chickens out back. I talked to the owners of the property that are, means surrounding me, and a lot of them agreed, and some of them were even thinking of doing the same. I did put in here that we were going to purchase a pre-made enclosure, and my husband's one that likes to do his research, said that Iowa winters would require us to have something a little bit stronger than what you can buy, so he is looking to build one. But I told him it had to be pretty, because the neighbors are gonna look at it.
No, and he isn't doing that just to get new tools, is he?
Oh, and there you have it.
That's all I have.
Does it have to be so far from the neighbor's backyard and side lawn? I don't remember how we had that.
We haven't required that in.
We have it quite recently, no.
Okay.
And you already talked to the neighbors, you got permission.
Are you? Yeah, you talked to your neighbors already, yeah.
Yep, yep. Um, the only one I haven't is the property directly behind us is a rental property.
Oh, okay.
But we did talk to the owner of the property.
Okay.
And he said it was fine. He even made sure that we knew that it was a certain amount of chickens and.
And no roosters.
And no rooster.
Yeah, no roosters.
Awesome.
I move for approval of the request.
I'll second that. I'm gonna give it to Joe. He went just a little quicker. Uh, okay, any other questions, guys? Alright, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
We'll all expect a dozen eggs.
Beavers are too. Thank you.
You're like, have a good night. Alright, um, then, we're looking for an action item here on complies their sanitation. We talked to them the other day about their May tenth pickup day, spring cleanup day down at the transfer station. Do you wanna speak to this more?
Again, this was something where we had some conversation with the council regarding doing something for some sort of spring cleanup, and how that would look. Because the transfer station is just south of town, instead of us having a single drop-off point and handling it twice, we'd encourage people to go to the transfer station on May tenth from seven AM, I believe, till one PM is what they were proposing. If you are a Manchester resident, you would be allowed to take a pickup truck load or a single axle trailer truck load, trailer load, to the transfer station, and that will be collected for free. The city of Manchester will cover that cost. There are certain materials that would require extra fees, TV, refrigerators, stuff like that. We'll have a list for people to use to go through. hazardous materials may not be collected either, but we are able to take the jewelry of regular household appliances. Construction raises another item that is not permitted. But we're trying to provoke where the transfer station is and show where people can take their stuff anytime that they want to.
And when we have Sarah post this, the next time, it'd be good to put the address on there, with a lot of people asking where it was located.
Yeah, I did put a copy of the sticker that we discussed before, just so you guys could look at the wording, make sure, and that's something that will, will, probably the next meeting, have you guys set the fee, have the council set a fee that we're gonna charge for those stickers. This would be outside of that collection day. This would be the ones that we would have here year round.
Yeah.
So.
So they'll have the option of getting rid of, say, a couch in the middle of the season.
Yeah.
But if you got like a spring cleanout, we're really heading south of town for that cleanup.
So if you see any changes you'd like on that wording, just let me know.
And I was asking, it's supposed to be a pretty green one, we get it, yeah. Alright, with that, I need a motion to approve the spring cleanup day. I need to approve the spring cleanup day.
I'll start.
I'll give it to, well, I'll give it to Mary Ann, she said it first, sorry. Okay, Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Brian, or Bill and Brian, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, you're both got them, thank you. Going every which way you want. Alright, uh, next, I have, I need a motion to through resolution thirty-five, and approving the installation of stop signs, West Marion Street, South Fifth Street, and some other ones, correct?
No.
Just that one.
Just that intersection. There were some conversations about changing that, cuz the intersection has a stop sign, uh, southbound off of North, or South Fifth. There's one eastbound off of West Marion Street. Uh, westbound West Marion is free flow, and then northbound South Fifth Street is a real sign. Um, council has talked and asked about putting up that as a four-way stop. Uh, so that's what this resolution will do, is to prove that as a four-way stopping tent.
I think it would be a lot less confusing for people, because every which direction you're going, something different's happening there, basically. So I like the idea of putting the four-way stop in myself.
Well, there would be more traffic on West Marion Street than there has been fast with three additional writing times on the other side. So I think the traffic patterns have changed perfectly.
Yeah.
So I'm going for approval of Resolution thirty-five. I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
And Linda?
Yes.
All right. Next, um, I need a motion to approve a payment to Kirk and Michael for the, uh, invoice for what completed on the Manchester Municipal Airport Runway Resurfacing Project in the amount of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Do you wanna speak to this?
Yeah, yeah, I wanna remind the council, this is part of the grant that we will receive once we have the bids in. Uh, the bids are due April eighteenth, um, so we'll see where those come in. The council will review the bids, uh, and then we will select the lowest bidder. Council will not award any contract, will just acknowledge receipt of the bids. We will then send that to the FAA. The FAA will then prepare a grant document for the city based on what those bid receipts are. Uh, this is a ninety-five-five match, so ninety-five percent of this is paid for through the FAA. This is based off of fuel sales uh, on airplane aviation fuel. Uh, so our cost share of this is five percent. And we would not award this in the bids. It says the council has up to July first to make any word decisions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Any other questions? Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right. Next, I need a motion to approve payment to Brantown Group in the amount of five thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Commerce Port Street Extension Project and the Granite Avenue Trail Extension Project. Do you wanna speak to that as well?
These are fees that we've occurred those costs for, so. Just approve the motion to this.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
All right, next, nuisance property updates.
Okay, well, we have five and we have no new ones filed in the last month, and it's brought to our attention on that. We have one that has, uh, three oh eight Lincoln Street to be inspected on May second to be cleaned up. If it's not, then we impose the fine and clean it. We have, uh, one on Grant Street that has been cleaned up since it was filed. Went to trial, and the case was dismissed. The judge didn't agree with us. I still wanted to impose the fine. Judge has the choice not to, but we're still taking the position every time they have to come to court if they wanna do it. And then, uh, on the South Third Street, we've got, they have been ordered to abate, and they have, they've got thirty days. Their time is not up. We have two that are set for trial in July, one on Gay Street and one on West Marion Street. And that's what we have right now.
Any questions for Jim? Thank you, Jim. All right, um, next, Sam, you need to get going, so we'll talk to you first.
Not much. Uh, Anderson Street, Toco was pretty well done, got measured down some of the sanitary and storm sewer structures. Um, there might be a couple, two cleanup items, photos and stuff to get a few site visits here and there, but, um, otherwise, for the most part, all of the, all fieldwork and stuff has, has been completed. So, other than that, unless there's any questions for anything, that's all I have.
Doesn't look like it. You're free to go now.
Thanks.
You're welcome. All right, Jason?
Being late, what I had an appointment that we're late getting out of. Um, really, the one thing I mentioned to Tim, anything different from last week is, uh, they do have the seating completed, or they have straw out there anyway, but hasn't all blown away for the detention pond and waterway grading on Commerce Port. That's been completed. Um, I think we're just waiting to make sure that actually grows and everything before we finalize, uh, a formal dedication of the street and everything back to the city over there. So that's all I got. The same thing on those other questions.
Doesn't look like it. All right, thanks, Jason. All right. Uh, Jim, did you have anything else for us tonight?
I do not have anything else. We have, um, been responding to a few things with Tim, but nothing yet to report tonight.
Okay. Okay, Tim?
Um, I had a meeting last week with, um, a group that does a flood study. They have done a preliminary flood study for the northeast portion of town. They have some ideas and things that could assist us. Uh, part of it, though, is now looking at applying for some grants to do a more in-depth study. Um, unfortunately, I understand now that the brand, brand, you know, are eligible or available under FEMA. Uh, so we'll have to look at some other items in order for us to be funding for doing the comprehensive study. But basically, we're destining projects at that point, identifying locations and what we would need. So a couple of the projects they looked at was daylighting the entire tributary, uh, taking out the culverts and the strains buried in our ground. Uh, opening things up. That would minimize some of the flooding and reduce some of the issues we have. Uh, some of the other things we're looking at is putting some dams up, blockages, uh, to backwater up before it gets into town, slow it down as it comes through town, so we can handle it. Uh, that would obviously entail putting up a structure, which is expensive, and then figure out the land costs and stuff like that. So we are looking at a number of the projects yet, uh, that we can do to minimize flooding impacts into our community. Uh, and still trying to figure out ways to lower the base flood elevation as we go through town, because that's what's impacting our houses. Uh, so I had that conversation. I'm working with, uh, RPA, um, through our affiliation with ECIA over in Dubuque. Uh, there's a potential for us to use planning funds, uh, through our RPA to study, uh, traffic analysis, traffic safety study up on North Franklin, maybe thirteen, between Crescent Drive and Honey Creek Drive. And looking at that intersection, if you understand how that life comes in there, uh, we are going to, I'd like to conduct a study. We can use some of the planning funds. It would be an eighty-twenty grant match to cover that cost. It would identify a way for us to change that, those intersections, so we don't have the dangers of intersections we have up there. I'm surprised we haven't had any more impacts. Um, and then there was an analysis done of all the intersections in town along the main federal route. Uh, and so we're still reviewing those as well. So getting that accomplished, um, does anyone have any changes or recommendations on the request for qualification on the comp plan? Otherwise, I will send that out to firms to get those submitted or do back May ninth. Uh, for the council to sit there and select who you'd like to bring in to do interviews with, and would like to get that finalized to June with them starting in July.
That was for what position again?
That is for the comprehensive plan update.
Oh, great, great.
I thought it was pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I didn't have any changes.
Okay.
I don't know if that's what happened.
I didn't, it looked good, Zee. You just, when you said started in June, it kinda threw me off. I'm like, wait, did I miss something? We're talking about the dog catcher.
Yeah, no. We'll have the firm, we'll select a firm, and have them start in July, which is done with our budget.
Okay, perfect. All right. Any other questions for Tim? Uh, Aaron?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, Brian?
Nothing.
Nothing tonight? Okay. Linda, building tonight. All right, Mary Ann, okay, Joe?
I had the, the time to, um, stop into the thrift stores, stores that had started up here, I guess, in the last eight months, we'll call it. They're a little busy. Uh, great, great stuff, and kinda was talking to some of the other business owners down around downtown, and maybe looking for a little bit more clarity on the downtown street project when it's coming and sidewalks and that kinda stuff, but.
Yeah, I had a meeting with the Downtown Retail Committee about a month ago now, and that was eye-opening for a lot of them to understand what the process is actually. Again, this is three years out, but we need to start that planning process to understand how that impacts for them to be able to figure out how they're gonna operate during those years that we're doing that project.
Anything else? Okay. Bill?
Nothing.
Okay, um, I had Tim send you guys a copy of the three-part series that I attended on, um, housing in our rural communities and how our towns are growing and how to keep population here. It was really, the first was in, the second one was really good, but the third one kinda tied it all together. So some really interesting things, thinking outside the box of what, um, we can do for housing. So I know you brought up some of the things that we'll be talking about with, uh, little X or little what do you call it?
The state law that is going through, and I sent that out too, is the accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
Uh, and it sounds like that is going to pass through, the state legislature has passed it, it's up to the governor to sign. And that is going to change our zoning ordinance, and it's mandated. We have to permit accessory dwellings, eighty use, uh, in residential areas. Now, we can have some restrictions as far as style, stuff like that. They have to match in. You can't just build a uh, steel shed and convert it over to that, but, uh, that'll be a change for us, as we talk about our comprehensive plan, how we do that with the different zoning ordinances.
Grading pods, basically.
Yeah, one of the things we'll wanna look at with our comp plan in zoning ordinance is we've gotten away from what percentage of block coverage in the zoning ordinance to just the setbacks. We may wanna reconsider that back to a percentage of block coverage, because again, that affects stormwater runoff, and that's a big challenge for us, especially as we work in our flooding.
And then I also attended the Iowa Rural Vitalities, uh, conference down in Ames with Donna Boss and Louise Bergen, and, um, cited in some really good, um, programs. One of them that I really enjoyed was the EMA one that they had about, you know, your plans, your strategies for, yeah, EF five tornado comes through, or we have a shooting, or or a flood. We, I know we keep errant noises, when's the next one? But, um, yeah, so, um, it was very eye-opening, and I told Tim that we'll wanna talk about some of that stuff. Can we do our comprehensive plan? It'll be very important when we look at those. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else. Oh, yes, Wednesday night, Awards and Commissions, four thirty to six. We'll be doing awards at five fifteen, and, um, hope you're able to join us, and it's at the fire station, so. Um, with that, I will take a motion from.
Yeah, we need to go to the.
Oh, we do. I need a motion going to closed session. I didn't look down and clearly sign.
I'll make a motion going to closed session.
I signed it. And that's in pursuit to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point oh five.
Yeah.
That, uh, will one C to discuss human litigation. Uh, who's, who made the motion?
I did.
And then who started it? Second, Joe, Linda, Brian, Jamie, and Bill.
Yes.
We're in closed session. Thank you, everybody. Okay.
So we're back in.
We're back in open session. Um, do we need to, you don't need to do a roll again and do? No, okay, I just need a motion to adjourn. Joe?
I'll shut it.
And Linda? And Mary Ann. You guys have a great night. Thank you very much.